Welcome to the Bethel Park Podcast Night. We are so pleased that you have agreed to come here tonight and to share your information with our audience. At the Bethel Park Chamber, I am the Executive Director. It's my pleasure to really take this opportunity to tell you that we are a nonpartisan, nonprofit organization and we service businesses and the communities that we serve with special projects. And we're really pleased to have this one. We want to take the opportunity to thank the Bethel Park Disability for these facilities here tonight. We want to thank also the age cable, the PPTV. We also want to thank Sage here today, who is responsible along with Diane Ford to provide us with our progress. So with that, I would like to introduce our two moderators for tonight. Diane Ford, who is a local business owner and has this one that's called Virtual Information Processing, and another one is Range, which is located at the northwest corner in the Bitch's Corner. And our other moderator is Jay P. Marinos. He is the Vice President of Washington Financial Bank, and they just opened a branch in Ben Siliva. They will be the moderators, and we thank them for helping us out tonight. But who knows? Do you have a opinion?
Just to reiterate what Connie said, we want to thank you guys for coming out. Just want to go over the forum ground rules one more time. The number one rule is to be kind and respectful at all times, to honor the allocated one-minute response time, and a 30-second warning will be given, and then we'll also give you a 10-second warning. And if you go over, you get the bell. Please keep your answers direct and succinct, speak loud and clear, and if you're comfortable, feel free to remove your masks when you're speaking into the mic. Also, I wanted to make sure that everyone understands that this is not a debate. We just want to have an opportunity for all the candidates to express their viewpoints and share their ideas with the community, okay? Each of you all will receive, well, we're only going to give one question to two of you. And just by virtue of you sitting up here, I understand and accept that you agree with the ground rules and you understand exactly how tonight is going to work. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, without further ado, we're going to get started. So the first question, and we're going to start with Sean and Buffy. What are the pros and cons of having a full-time kindergarten, and where do you stand?
Which one of us do you want to start?
You can get Sean.
Okay. I believe kids need the best head start that they can, full-time kindergarten, you know, social development, you know, basic development. I think it's a great place for kids to start with. You know, as far as, you know, just getting kids acclimated to that schedule, I think it eases the burden on parents in the community because they can then work a full-time job. I think there's just many benefits to it. I think parents should have maybe the option based on if it's feasible or not, but I definitely support it if the parents want to.
I actually got my undergrad in elementary ed, and I started in kindergarten, and I'm not opposed to full-day kindergarten. I'm not sure we have the room at Bethel Park right now, but I'm not opposed to it. Those days go fast when they're half-days. I see the benefit both ways, so, I mean, in a perfect world, you'd be able to offer both, but I do understand full-day kindergarten, some parents would be, it would be more flexible with their work schedules. And I think contrary to popular belief, those days go really fast, and the kids do need time to play, so I think that that's a pro with having a full day, because they would still have that time to play within their school day and socialize and still get the academics.
The next question is, what are your top three priorities for this office, starting with you, Dan?
So my number one priority is to make sure that students have the mental health resources that they need. Over the past decade or so, especially with children, rates of depression, anxiety, even suicide have been drastically increasing. Obviously, coming out of pandemic, those issues are only going to be exacerbated, so we need to make sure that our children have all of their mental health needs met first and foremost. My second priority is continuing the effort that's been done so far and started by, actually, Ms. Ford here, with the Diversity Equi-- pardon me, Diversity Equity and Inclusion Program. I think we've really started some amazing avenues so far, and I'm really excited to continuing those. Finally, I'd like to improve our school ranking. One thing that I see as a really easy opportunity to improve is our AP testing. I had the opportunity of taking, I believe, seven or eight AP courses in high school, and I was able to get credit for those in college, kind of get ahead in my studies. We only have 19% of students taking at least one AP test. Top schools in our area have 50%.
Good job. Um, Gail?
So my top three, I actually only have two priorities. The first is excellence in education, making sure that our curriculum is robust, that our teachers are well-equipped, that our students are learning well, and are achieving what they need to achieve to stay at or above grade level, really. And my second priority is to make sure that we are keeping our school taxes affordable for those in the community. So really, those are my two top priorities.
Changes would you suggest that school were moving? Changes that I would suggest?
Well, I do think that the more in-person learning time that is available is absolutely the best thing for students who are able to come to school. I'm very happy that the board recently decided to direct administration to move to a five-day in-person schedule for next school year, barring, of course, any state or federal changes or depending on the progress of the virus. I also think that a lot of students really did very well with virtual school. There are many who didn't, but there are a lot who did, and I appreciated the hard work that all the teachers and the staff put into changing those lesson plans to virtual and really creating unique ways to get students to work together in groups and really learn about technology and perseverance and working through problems.
Yeah, I think it's really important to get back to face-to-face education, five days a week. The CDC is coming out, and Dr. Fauci and some of the people saying that we may not reach herd immunity by fall, so I think it's important that we have people that are dedicated to making sure the students get in there face-to-face. The second thing I think that's very important is not all school, not all children did equally well under this hodgepodge of different academic programs. So I think it would be incumbent upon the district to do some intensive testing to find out where everybody is. I would much rather see people back up half a year than to go on and push forward with some of the basics missing. If you miss something in second semester of high school, it's probably not that big of a deal, but if you miss something in first grade, it impacts second grade, third grade, fourth grade, and so on and so forth. So I think it's very important to find out where students actually are.
All right. Next question is, explain what you know about class size and what the teachers have agreed on in their contract.
So, my understanding of class sizes is the big challenge is more in the elementary schools, where there are several different elementary schools, many of them in the neighborhoods of the students. And I have signs from some of my neighbors, they love their elementary schools. But I do understand that the teachers want to see more of the same numbers from class to class or grade to grade, and so there's some talk about consolidating or closing and merging, and so that's my understanding of that.
Sean, can you answer the same question?
Ah, I think class size has a tremendous impact on student achievement, engagement, and just, you know, help that the teachers can provide. You know, I've had classes upwards of 28, 30 kids, and the amount of one-on-one instruction time and help I can give individuals is, you know, just incredibly limited to that. I also have other classes, electronics classes, where I have 10 students there. It's projects, it's hands-on, and there's a lot of troubleshooting going on. I can't imagine doing a class like that with 28 kids in the room. You know, study after study shows the benefits of a smaller class size, and, you know, I think that is something we should really push. I think that should be included in the budget. You know, I know teachers, you know, class management is easier to do, but just the effectiveness of education on the kids, it's just a win, so I think that should be addressed as far as trying to shrink that.
What's some of the current talks on the transgender recruitment in these areas communities? We explore the balance of a biological male participating in a female sport like swimming basketball.
I do not believe that the school board decision, I believe there are laws in place in our state, and that's what we would follow in this school.
So whenever I said earlier that one of my main priorities is diversity, equity, and inclusion, I mean that for all students, not just some students. So I'm fully in favor of trans women or trans men participating in the sport that's consistent with their gender identity. There was actually a Supreme Court decision, Bostock versus Clayton County, that ruled that discrimination on gender identity is unconstitutional, as Buffy said. We would have to defer to that decision. There's also been a decision out of, I believe it was Idaho, where a federal court ruled that if a school did not allow a student to participate in a sport consistent with their gender identity, they would be in violation of the Equality Clause of the Fourteenth Amendment. So in terms of both a morality standpoint as well as a legal standpoint, I'm fully in favor of that, yes.
Next question is, are you in favor of neighborhood schools, or do you think it would be, be moved, Bethel Park, consolidated, elevated?
So I watched the school board meeting concerning the feasibility study, and I really need to research a little bit more and get more information before I can come down on either side of that decision. I see benefits to both, and I see things that are cons to both. So I really need to look at that and get more information before I can definitely say, I want to go this way, or I want to go that way. And I really feel like it's a board decision, for sure, and not just, you know, one person.
I think that, I totally agree, Gail, that there are pros and cons to both of those situations. I think that it is a community decision, and I so appreciate Dr. Walsh's approach to the strategic planning and bringing people in all the stakeholder groups together to really look at that issue. I think that we have a lot of difficulty in our current situation keeping class sizes equitable throughout our buildings. I also think that we should address the grade-level team aspect, as opposed to one building pitting against another, or this group is doing something. I would love to have our grade-level teachers be more of a team, working together, sharing their best practices, learning and growing, teaching and mentoring each other. And I think that there are other options, rather than all five schools or just one.
Purpose of the school board is to govern and not to manage. It is purpose of the school board to set broad policies and to have them implemented through the administration. Examples are the policies that they make. The school board votes on curriculum, the school board hires teachers, but it's not their job to get down into the weeds and manage things on a classroom level.
Well, how do you follow that? Yeah, so it's more of a high level, working with administration and examining the curriculum options and trying to work together to get what's best for the community and the school. And just as Mr. Means said, staying out of the minutia, staying where we belong and, you know, working with the other groups so that they can do their job.
Question is, if elected, what process would you employ to make decisions?
I think getting broad community support and just the input from all the players involved, whether it's, you know, faculty, staff, students, parents, you know, and just asking the community how they want their resources managed the best is part of this job. I don't think it should be just my decision. I don't think it should be any of our decisions. I think we need, you know, a broad coalition of opinions and let the best one win. So I think that's an easy question.
I think that right now, the culture of the world we live in is very divided, and I think that all decisions, when it comes to our community and our schools, should be community decisions, but I also think we need unity, more than anything right now. So I think that listening to other people is huge. We've gotten into a habit of ignoring people that don't have the same beliefs as us, and I wholeheartedly disagree with that. I think that in order to thrive as a community, we need collaboration and we need to be kind to each other. So if I were elected, I would do surveys, I would use conversations, and definitely get input from everyone in the community.
So the LA Conference has reported that there's a shortage of employees for steel trade positions, and there will be a need to hire employees from outside of PA. What is anything, what do you do to ensure that our students are prepared to take advantage of local steel jobs and create opportunities?
So I think that the partnership we have with Steel Center that Ms. Ruhl has really, you know, worked a lot on, and I think she serves on her board as well, that's been fantastic. I think those opportunities are really what we need. I was an operations manager at US Steel before my current job as an engineer, and I can tell you that my operators, my electricians, and my maintenance workers that worked under me, all made more than I did as an operations manager. These are fantastic careers, and I think what we really need to do from a school level, you know, we already have that partnership with Steel Center. I think what we really need is to de-stigmatize these trade positions, because these are incredibly intelligent people. They're difficult jobs, they're well-paying jobs, they have great benefits, and most of the people I know that went into trades are doing better financially and in terms of having, you know, excess free time, just all these opportunities, than a lot of the people I know that went to college. So I think ending the stigma around trade school and things like that would be the best thing to do.
I could not agree more, Dan. That would be my answer 100% to de-stigmatize that Steel Center component of our programs. It's a robust, amazing school for trades, and I would love to see those students who have an interest really be encouraged to take advantage of the opportunity to go there and get the skills that they need to then go into the workforce right out of high school. I think it's really important.
Next question is, what is your comfort level as far as making educational and fiscal decisions for the Bethel Park School?
I think that school board members, first of all, can't work alone. We only work as a unit of nine, and we really work as a team of 10 with the superintendent. We have a very capable superintendent, and we have extremely capable administrative teams and extremely capable staff. I am very comfortable with a lot of the initiatives and best practices. I sit on the Special Education Advisory Panel for Pennsylvania, so I'm in regular contact with the teams at PDE, at the Bureau of Special Ed, at Patton that do the trainings, and I attend a lot of those trainings. So I think that I bring insight as a parent to that process, and I'm not afraid to enter into conversations about educational topics.
I have 30 years of teaching at the college level, also homeschooled. I did homeschooling evaluations for students K through 12, and I've taught kids K through graduation. So I feel very comfortable in educational decisions. However, when it comes to special education, I don't have that much experience, so I would rely primarily on what the staff told me and what the experts in that area told me. As far as the finances, I'm very comfortable there. We've saved a lot of money for the taxpayers. To date, I think we probably saved $22 million for the taxpayers since 2016, and about $1,550 for the individual, and we did all this without cutting any programs. So I feel comfortable, even though I'm not an expert in all areas, I would rely on those people who are experts when I don't have the understanding.
To the Bethel Park School District, could you tell everyone what the net worth is? Where is the difference?
Listing the available options of what our choices are, you know, that obviously, again, is a group decision. It's not a one-person decision, it's going to be gone with the whole board, and just hearing out each other, as Buffy said, respectfully, listening to each other, and getting all the options on the table, and as a group, coming up with what's important.
I think a good use of the funds would be to, again, as Sam was saying, you know, these trade schools are great, great careers. However, you know, the ones I work with in my district with some of our robotics programs, these people, they're good-paying jobs, start at $14 an hour, you know, they can move to $28 within nine months. They're having trouble getting kids who are good in, you know, algebra and just basic writing skills. The jobs are there, we need to increase, you know, the knowledge of the students to be able to take advantage of this. I think outreach to, you know, if you're in engineering in school, you have a chance to do, you know, a co-op with various companies. I think we should get on board and try and pair our students up with companies to get learning experiences, you know, that way. I think that would be a good use.
Next question is, how important is it to you for the district's curriculum to be all inclusive, for everyone to be well-expected?
Very important to me. I have a master's in special education, and I think it's, I think it's very important for everyone to feel like they're part of the student body and part of the school community. There are really creative ways that we can make that happen. There are partners classes that incorporate students with special needs with typical peers, and they work together in specials, and it's a peer modeling, peer mentoring program. Those are awesome. Kids get to know each other, so I am very in favor of an inclusive environment.
I think based on my previous answers, you can probably gauge my answer to this question too, but I think it's very important. I think it can be really difficult for students to succeed and really set, you know, bold goals for themselves if they don't see themselves reflected in their curriculum. Now, whether it just be a book that they're reading in elementary school that has someone who looks like them, or maybe feels the same way, that's maybe a doctor, or an engineer, or a lawyer, something as simple as that can go a long way in motivating a student to succeed. If they see the same old person that doesn't look anything like them, it can be difficult to picture themselves in that role. There's actually a really good study, I think it's out of the University of Virginia, that actually looked at schools that had Diversity Equity and Inclusion programs, and not only were their students more comfortable with people of, you know, different races, different religion, sexual orientation, et cetera, but they also actually performed better in school. So inclusive curriculum doesn't just help mentally, but it helps academically as well.
Thank you. How important is it to you for the staff to be culturally diverse?
I think, and I've thought a lot about these issues and these questions. I feel that the most important is that the staff is well-qualified, and I would love to see well-qualified individuals of all colors, of all, you know, definitely would love to see diversity. How to attract diversity into a primarily white community is a challenge that I think needs to be discussed and, you know, really dive into how we can do that, how we attract great, diverse, qualified individuals to staff our schools, to teach, to hold those positions.
There is an effort, an initiative coming forward from PDE about attracting teachers in general, because there are fewer teachers graduating, there are fewer teachers looking for jobs in our state. It is, it is an effort by the entire state to attract more teachers, get more kids in those programs so they can become teachers. And part of that is cultural diversity as well. I think it is important. I think that it is also a community issue. It's not a school-district issue, it is the community as the whole, because we have to be a place where people want to live and a place where people want to work. And we do that by recognizing that we are all people, and we don't have to other each other. We are all in it together, and all means all.
Due to assist in creating and maintaining an inclusive culture in the climate?
I think it's very important to treat all people equally, and primarily, this has to do with the classroom, but Bethel also has a number of programs, anti-bullying programs and things like that. So I think in a large respect, if you make the purpose to seek academic excellence, then some of the other things fall by the wayside. So it's important to be fair with people, it's important to treat all people equally, and certainly, anything that is biased because of somebody's race or ethnicity or anything like that should be dealt with severely.
So, I'm in agreement with what Mr. Means just said about treating people fairly and coming at the issue with just kindness and consideration and fairness. I'm not going to elaborate anymore on that.
How does a school director's role and responsibilities differ from the superintendent and industry?
I feel it's the school board's role to set the direction and goals of where we want to be. The superintendent is more in charge of figuring out how to carry those out effectively. You know, as far as, you know, I really think that's pretty much, you know, about the whole answer there, so.
You're asking two teachers, that question. I agree with Sean. I think the superintendent runs the schools. I mean, he works with us, with the staff. I say us when I'm a teacher, not on the school, but he works with the teachers and the administration, and he, it's like, he's the manager, and he sits We sit above and just, I guess we listen to him and his needs, and then we can make decisions as a, as a board as to what, what is needed, and also I guess we are the people that have to be physically responsible, and, yeah, I, I agree with Sean. He's running the towel now.
Next question is, if you would have to make budget cuts, where would you make them, and how would you subvert the changes?
So I've thought about this question a lot, because with our current budget scenario, for those who don't know, if we fail to raise taxes this year, we're currently in a $2.7 million yearly deficit. Even if we raise taxes all the way up to the index of 3.5%, we're still at roughly an $800,000 per year deficit. So we basically have two options right now. We, we increase taxes, or we cut programs. With the high-level viewpoint that I have of the budget, and that was presented at the budget meetings by Mr. McCoslin, there's nothing that, you know, immediately jumps out to me to cut, unfortunately. It's, I think that I would have to get on the board before I can kind of look at things in a much more narrow and specific lens to see where we might have some inefficiencies, and we could have some possible cost savings. I do want to say that I absolutely love what Mr. McCoslin did with the zero-based budget, that's looking at a starting point of zero, and then working from there, rather than just grandfathering in our previously existing budget, and then going backwards, because people will never give up what they already have in their budget.
Again, I agree with Dan. I would need to get in there and see line item by line item, and as a board, discuss and make those decisions. I would hope there, there isn't much to cut, because, again, education comes first, and we want to provide the best for our kids. And, yeah, I agree. To get in there and learn, learn more about, and get more context of what's going on with the budget and with every, all of those working parts. I need more information before I can land again.
How would you work to improve mental health among students and staff in the district?
I think we absolutely, I think we needed it before the pandemic, but I think absolutely we need more social workers available to students, or more guidance counselors who are available for that purpose. In some of our buildings, like at Neil Armstrong, for instance, they obviously aren't doing a lot of college counseling quite yet, although they do talk about those issues. They spent, they are able to spend more time working with students on their individual needs, and grouping them together, and helping them learn as they grow. But once you get to the high school level, that time starts diminishing. And we really need to make sure that we are providing access for students who are anxious, who are afraid, who've had a loss, who are concerned, who feel behind, who might be angry about what's been going on. No child learns if they aren't in a place of wellness, safety, and acceptance.
Next question is, why do you want to serve?
Okay. Again, I think the first line of defense is the classroom teacher. A, a classroom teacher should know their students, they should be aware of what's going on, and if they see some sort of problem, they should get them the testing they need and refer them to professional help. I'm not sure it's the school district's responsibility to supply all this help, but certainly they should be able to identify the people, give them whatever help they can in the school district, and if it's something that can't be taken care of in the school, they should refer them to professional help. And if the family can't afford that, I think they should try and see what they can do to make sure they can access that help. There's a number of programs available through the county also, so.
Next question is, why do you want to serve as a school director in Bethel Park?
I think there's great opportunity in Bethel Park to move forward with excellence in education, with also fair negotiations in regard to teachers' contracts, so that it's more balanced with non-teachers on the board, and not just all teachers. I also want to serve because I, I see lots of young people in, in my life experience and my interactions, where I, I just see there's a great opportunity to do better, and I want to be part of that picture.
I grew up in Baldwin, and, you know, we were rivals with, with Bethel Park at that, you know, at that point, and we were always aware that, you know, Bethel had a really good, you know, a good solid reputation for academics. It's why my wife and I bought a house here. It's why property value is high here, resale value is high here. It's why our kids traditionally have done well. Because of, you know, I, I pay attention to what's going on in my, the district I work in, but due to recent events, you know, the, the budgeting fiasco of the last board, I decided there needed to be more adults in the room who will just analyze decisions, make sound decisions based on, you know, 10 seconds, you know, results-driven decisions that, you know, benefit everyone in, in the community. So, you know, I'm willing to give up one night a week for four years to try and make this happen and leave it a better place than I came into.
School board members set policy for the district. What is one policy that you would like to change?
Maybe, maybe the policy that the outside speech doesn't affect the inside school day. So I think that maybe we need to implement some kind of differentiation between hate speech and free speech. I know that social media, the kids at school deal with a lot of things they never dealt with when we were young, and a lot of it happens outside school, which is out of our jurisdiction. So maybe making a policy that states hate speech is one thing, and free speech is another thing, and if hate speech is happening outside school, and it's going to influence our kids in school, maybe we have some kind of, kind of, give some thought to that.
That's, that's definitely a really tough question to answer. I think Buffy did a pretty good job with it. I actually combed through all of our policies rather recently. One that I think that, you know, could be amended is we have a specific policy about hairstyles, and there's been a large push, and I think, you know, there was a city, I don't know if you call it a bill, or, you know, a, a motion passed, as well as a county motion passed, to basically prevent discriminatory, you know, hair punishment. Things like that are historically levied on people of color, because their hairstyles may be considered, you know, unprofessional, or something like that, and it has some, I guess, deep roots in, in racism. So I would want to get rid of that, because I, I really don't see what value that policy holds in our school district.
Do you believe that all students should go to college?
I believe that students should be able to chart their own course, whether that's college, or trade school, or, or another choice. I don't believe college is for everyone. Some students will excel at some things, and some will excel at other things. And again, I think that's a family decision, and those students should be able to decide for themselves which course that they want to pursue.
No, I do not believe that all students should go to college. I think all students should have the opportunity to go to college. College should be something that is available to all students. I think there are a lot of students who are, like we were talking about before, and Dan was mentioning, going to trades, and are much, that is exactly what they need to do. It's what they want to do, and it's what they've dreamed of doing. And there is absolutely nothing wrong with that, at all. I, I'd like to celebrate the way we do when students sign for a sports scholarship. I'd like to celebrate their decisions to take those jobs and enter that workforce. But I do think that college is something that students who want to do that can certainly achieve. Often, it's, sorry, often, students who might not be ready when they graduate are certainly ready in a year or two, or even five. So I feel that putting it out of reach and a forever no thing is never a good idea. We should all be open to that possibility.
Is my last question, but I got a few that we did this. According to the C D C, over 50% of high school students self-identify as LGBTQ+ plus. How do you think the Bethel Park Schools can best support the LGBTQ+ students?
Oh geez. Again, I think in the classroom, it should just be focused on academics and, and nothing else. I mean, I certainly think that all people should have equal opportunity, but I don't know exactly what you're asking me. I, are you asking if, if they should have some sort of special?
I'm not, I'm not asking.
Okay, okay. No, I, I just think the fundamental idea, you know, I believe that all people are God's children, and that they should be treated with dignity and respect and equally. And if you don't do that, no program's going to help. Will you please restate the question?
According to the C D C, over 15% of high school students self-identify as LGBTQ+ plus. How do you think Bethel Park Schools can best support the LGBTQ+ students?
The same way they support all students with just treating everybody with respect. Everybody is important. As was said, we are all God's children, and not focusing on that, focusing on getting a good education.
Okay, that was the last question, and I don't know if we have any questions from anybody that's online. Does anyone in the audience have any questions? Does anyone on the panel have any questions? All right, well, thank you all for your time. Again, like I said, tomorrow we'll be in email with information that is, all of the questions, we get an opportunity to answer the questions that were asked in, and be able to share it out to the public outside of here. Okay? Thank you so much, and, well, you guys can sit there, since Jack sat through yours, he was the main course. So, Jack, we want to hear from you. There were no specific questions posed for you, because we already all know that you're great mayor.
Then I, then I'm done. No, I just, I just want to thank the panel, everyone that, that came out, Connie, for doing this. The last time we had something like this was actually 24 years ago, and that's when the League of Women Voters had it. So I think it's a great thing to do. Of course, 24 years ago, we didn't have Facebook, we didn't have, you know, live streaming or anything like that, so that's a good thing. Myself, I was on council for 16 years. This is my eighth year as mayor. Four years ago, I decided that eight years was enough, and I was going to give it up. And then two main things happened. Three years ago, we had our flood, and it just brought the community together. I was never more proud of a group of people. You know, we, we worked here at the municipality to make sure everything ran smooth, neighbors helped neighbors, and sometimes you, you just wish that, that that day would come back, or instead of, you know, people, I mean, it's with the pandemic, it's, it's crazy out there, but you wish people would, would do things like that. And for that, we were recognized with the award. We got the governor's award for local government responding to adversity. We were the winner in the state in 2019. So because of the community involvement, it was, it was great. The second thing, obviously, was last year, was the pandemic. The municipality, the council was, I mean, the council did an outstanding job, as well as the police department, EMS was always there, the fire department, and so on. And I took pride in, and even though when the phone would ring at my house, and it was me speaking, giving a message, I didn't get offended the first couple of months, and my wife would not answer the phone. But just the feedback we got, I mean, we have a terrific community here. I do that program where I recognize outstanding people in the community, been doing it for eight years, and I look forward to doing it for the next four years, and I thank everyone for their support. Either nobody wanted to do this job, or else I'm doing okay. So I appreciate you inviting me tonight.
Diane, can I say one thing?
Yes.
I think I speak for all the candidates, and I would like to thank the chamber for holding this event, and inviting us here, and giving us all the opportunity to participate in this community forum.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. I just want to make note that these questions were submitted by the incumbents, so they know some of the issues that you will be facing, and also from some of the community members. And I also want to say that I was that one 24 years ago that went for the legal voters to the debate, you were spared, really. You really called it very well, so I want to thank all of you for participating and giving of your time. One little comment, there's an average of about four meetings a month for our school board, just to let you know.